I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Present.
Councilmember Brian Erdy Alice.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Here.
John Kaper.
Here.
Bill Garcia.
I have not heard from him.
Okay. Lynn Deal.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Present.
First item on our agenda is public comment or audience participation for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody who wish to address council?
I would like to, if that's okay.
We're always glad to see you.
Do I need to sign this?
Yeah, please. Oh, boy, we're in trouble.
I brought the heavy hitters.
It's W A Y.
Stop.
Stop.
Oh, man.
There you go.
I like that.
No, I, we just wanted to take the time to come in and thank you guys for everything you guys do for us, for Bobstock. I was thinking about this on the way in, because I didn't have anything else to do. This is almost a city event in the way that we have sanitation department, the police department, the sewer, or the, we don't even know what happened there. But the streets department.
Yeah.
And I hate to mention the electrical department, because I think they hate us. Because they went above and beyond to get all of our vendors' power that needed it and wanted it. And so, I'll let these guys speak more to that, but we felt like the event this year was probably more a testament to everybody being locked down for a couple of years. But there were a lot of people in town and a lot of people from not outside of Morgan County, which I hope is great for our tourism. But thank you guys for things that you do for us. But, and I know these guys have some things to say, but I wanted to be the first to say that. Thank you very much.
No, same for me. Just thank you guys a lot. We've had a lot of, and I mentioned to Melissa, it was like, I think everybody that's sitting up there was at Bobstock. So, thank you guys for participating as well. And we did want to take a minute to just ask concerns, things we could do better was a big part of feedback. And we haven't had a chance to sketch up with Lauren either, but going, hey, we're always willing to make improvements as this grows. So, definitely open to feedback here or contact us later if there are concerns that came up. We don't always hear those. So, we would love to have that feedback to make adjustments to.
Thirty-eight special warrant.
Yeah, you've been requesting email those directly to me. That's fine, too.
Wrong concern.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. We, we joke about when we stand, we stand on the corner of Beaver and Main a lot the two weeks before the event. And we always joke that every city car looks the other way as we're driving, but they, they really don't. They come over and help or, yeah, the electric, electrical department looked at my map on a Tuesday, and by Wednesday, they had enough power for us to have it for everybody. So, it really was awesome. And yeah, it was our best year, I think, planning wise.
I think this year, starting set up on Thursday, the extra day, I mean, I, I watched you guys a couple of years just scamper like chickens with their head cut off on Friday trying to set up. And I, I think the extra day was something.
I can tell you it was huge for us. So, thank you guys for that approval. We do have some plans of contacting businesses a little differently to make them aware and maps to let them know how that will go. We did go door to door and mention to a lot of them, but that was immensely helpful. And it takes a long time. I, I figured out, I think on Friday, that we now set up longer than the event takes place. The time we do Thursday and all the way till five o'clock on Friday, things are still being set up to go that night. And then Saturday, we do spend more time moving everything in, arranging and setting up than bands play. So, that, it takes some work. Takes some time.
Oh, and I think the expansion of what you guys have grown to from Riverside Park first year to where you are now. It really kind of brought an atmosphere of festival and the park that we used to have, but don't. It's, it's combined that with the inter, musical entertainment that we have. So, I didn't really hear or see of any incidents or catastrophes or things that were out of there. I know there's little things that pop up. You have that many people that gather, but I don't know if anybody else did. But I, I thought it was phenomenal. I have family coming back. They've already booked for next year from California. So, this will be their third time. So.
One of the things that we, really made us proud was numerous vendors doubled their income this year as opposed to two years ago. And then we got response back from a lot of city businesses, written orders, that really did well. That's a, that's a really exciting for us, because that's what we're trying to do is expose people from outside of our areas that aren't within our community, our lifestyle. That's what we've picked up.
If, if I could say from the police perspective, first of all, thank you guys. I mean, I know we worked close together before this, so I appreciate that communication. We didn't have any major issues. We'll try to make some tweaks. As we made it bigger, we'll, we'll need to make some tweaks. But nothing that you guys did that changed anything. Just as it got bigger, we'll need to make some more, put some more people in there. But we really appreciate the feedback and the constant communication before the event, after the event, and, and everything you do to, to help us understand what the issues may be as well.
And we understand as that grows, there may be need for us to hire additional security. That's been brought up. We are prepared to do that, so it doesn't tax our police department. So, that's something that is there that we'll work on, you know, budgeting for, and when it's a need, you know, we'll step up to do that.
What you didn't mention is one year it might be the National Guard, the next year it might be Barney Fife.
Depending on budget.
As, as long as it's not you, Wayne, I think we'll be all right.
Um, we had asked, and we worked with Steve a little bit on a date, we wanted to say thank you to all of you as council, but all of the city departments. So, we've been trying to put together a date to, plus everybody at the movie theater, where we'd like to do dinner food and invite everybody and their families and just do that as a thank you. So, we're working on that, and you will all be invited. But I think that's it for us.
Yeah.
Very good. I look forward to the upcoming one. I think.
I think it's the ninth and tenth next year. So, that's second full weekend, eighth and ninth. Eighth and ninth. Yeah. We'll be joining eighth and ninth next year.
Well, thank you guys for having me. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Anybody else? Hard act to follow, huh?
Ditto.
Ditto. Your prejudice, your bias. Next is approval of the minutes of our July twentieth, twenty twenty-one council regular meeting. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. A draft copy of the July twentieth, twenty twenty-one city council regular meeting minutes were included in your packet and are presented for your approval by resolution.
Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes and if there's any corrections or provisions? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to approve the minutes of the July twentieth meeting.
Second. Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries on a unanimous vote of six to zero with Councilmember Garcia absent.
Next item is recognition of business of the month for August.
Good evening, everyone. Almost three decades ago, my life and the community of Fort Morgan were changed forever. What started as a conversation over an erector set moving cow developed into a discussion, an eventual new site location of one of Fort Morgan's premier companies. Tonight, I have the privilege of recognizing the Barry E. Walter Senior Company as the August Business of the Month for excelling in such areas as customer service, growth, active involvement, pride in business, and community contributions. Like many small businesses, it wasn't always easy. The beginnings were riddled with challenges. The company literally started in the garage of Lauren Walter Senior, who started making hard-to-find plumbing parts. Although the company grew into Walter Plumbing Parts, it went out of business in the mid nineteen eighties after Lauren sold the company. Barry Walter Senior bought its assets out of bankruptcy and restarted the business as the CEO of Barry E. Walter Senior Company. Several years later, at a chance encounter with representatives from the city of Fort Morgan at a California trade show, Barry and his family determined that Fort Morgan was a good choice to build and grow its new operations. And grow they did. The company steadily expanded the workforce from six employees to the thirty that they now have. They started with four machines, which involved into thirteen, increasing capital investment, improving company operations efficiency, and providing a better service and expanded product line for its customers. Barry E. Walter Senior Company makes approximately fourteen thousand unique parts for repackagers, plumbing supply houses, and wholesalers throughout the country, and has sales valuing more than eight times what they did when they first opened their doors in Fort Morgan. Just as unique as their products is their company culture and its emphasis placed on five core values, with the first centering on family first. I was impressed when I first started working with Barry Senior. One of his concerns when moving to our community was how their front desk person, who was coming with them from California, would fit in, meet people her age, and feel like part of the community. This is where I experienced firsthand that family comes before business. Another important core value for the Barry E. Walter Senior Company is serving others. Barry Junior, who isn't able to join us tonight, has mentioned how important it is for the company to stay connected to and support the community, whether that be through their community service PTO policy, which supporting fellow commu, fellow Colorado manufacturers, or connecting with youth organizations in the community to show them options for a career in manufacturing. The business provides one hour of PTO time for each hour of time served at local nonprofits in the community. They always make time to give tours and partner with local middle schools, high schools, and the community college in an effort to narrow the skills cap, often giving employment opportunities to area students. Speaking of employees, they hire for culture and train for skill. All of their machine operators were trained in-house, providing good quality jobs with benefits that matter, not just to the team member, but to their family as well. When Steve Glameyer and I toured their manufacturing facility, it was evident that it was important that more than just jobs were provided, but an enriching career experience resulted for the employees. In the words of Barry Junior, "The team members we hire are humble, hungry, and people smart. They are our rock stars." Barry E. Walter Senior Company is viewed as an industry leader and has been featured in various trade industry publications. Barry Walter Junior is a convening leader of N E C O M, the Manufacturing Sector Partnership of Northeast Colorado. And owner-president Barry Walter Senior is on the board of KAMA, the State Trade Association dedicated to advancing manufacturing. Other core values include small business, American-made matters, and building relationships. The emphasis on customer service and relationship is evident in the many testimonials this company has received throughout its tenure. We have been working with Barry E. Walter Senior Company for decades. If we had to sum them up in one sentence, it would be, "They are just good people." Knowledgeable, responsible, and easy to work with are just some additional words we would use to describe them. And this was from one of their customers, Yolanda Frank with Equiparts. And this one, "We have been doing business with them for more than fifteen years. They offer many quality items that meet our changing needs." Barry E. Walter Senior Company is top-notch in all aspects, from pricing to quality and service. Everyone there is a pleasure to work with. They understand the value of personal relationships and are willing to go the extra mile to help grow our business. In today's world, there are not too many vendors out there that compare to what Barry E. Walter Senior Company offers." And that comment was made by Donna Johnson with TMS South, Inc. "The list of accolades goes on. I found no shortage of positive comments on the services that they provide." In a globalized world, the Barry E. Walter Senior Company is a stellar example of how a small business located in a rural area can overcome obstacles, be a pillar of support for the community, and even thrive. Please join me in recognizing and thanking the August Business of the Month, Barry E. Walter Senior Company, in making Fort Morgan a great place to live, work, and enjoy.
Thank you, Sandy. Just a couple of things I wanted to say. When my wife and I decided to move our business to Fort Morgan twenty-six years ago, we knew that it would allow for more growth opportunities than the city of Los Angeles, where we were located. Cost of living, small-town life, values that were closer aligned with ours, these were all things that we were looking for. Little did we know that not only would it allow the business to grow and us to provide more career opportunities, but to our surprise, it has allowed all four of our sons to work for the company and in the last six years assume its leadership. We are humbled by the honor of this recognition. We want to thank all of those that have contributed over the years, and we look forward to many more years of serving our community. I, I have basically stepped down from running the company, and the four boys are now in charge. I help out when I'm in town, if I'm not out hunting and fishing or doing honeydews at home. But I still put in a lot of hours and, and help with product development and any other problems that may come up that they need assistance with. But they have, they have done an amazing job and, and taken over and relieved me of having to worry when I leave. And we truly have been very blessed. I also have three grandchildren currently working in the business, one nephew. I think that's it. This is my youngest son Nathaniel, who, he's now been there ten years. So, yeah, it, it's been amazing, and my wife and I just both feel incredibly blessed that, with the kids and, and our grandkids and that to be able to be here and, and grow a business in a way that we, we don't think we ever could have, living in Los Angeles with cost of doing business and everything else. We actually just added our fourteenth CNC lathe, and we, we go through about anywhere from four to six thousand pounds of brass every week. So, we're, we're producing a lot of parts and shipping them all over the country. And we manufacture replacement parts from parts that were originally made back in the early nineteen hundreds even. So, as well as things that are being currently produced today. So, it's all aftermarket replacement parts, and it's, it's been great. We're the only company in the United States that is personally manufacturing replacement parts other than the OEM manufacturers that, most of them aren't even in the United States anymore. They're making it overseas. And our, our, most of our competition is from overseas. So, but it's, it's been a great business and.
It's been a great place to grow it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, you put together one heck of a succession plan.
I, I truly was blessed. I, I, I never imagined, all, all four of them at one time or another said, because they worked in the company when they were in high school and, you know, did the dirty jobs of sweeping floors and washing parts, and all four of them said, "I'm never going to work here."
Never say never.
Never say never. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Next item is appointments to, of members for the preservation board. Ms. Deal.
We are, we're reappointing Michael Schmeckley. He's been on several years, and he, he does a good job. So, do you want me to, do I need to just talk about him or?
We have his bio, our sheets in front of us. Just had the, has this been brought before the heritage board?
She wanted to, she talked to me about it and said that she was going to bring it directly to council, because I knew them. Okay, so, do you want me to make a motion, or how do you want to do this?
Well, is it just for Mike Schmeckley, or is it for Debbie Amika?
Debbie Amika, and she's, she's new, but she has good credentials, and so we welcome her to be a part of our board.
Okay. Typically, these would go before the advisory board, and they would review them and that. But since you're a part of it and been on.
Yeah, that's, she wanted to speed it up a little bit, and so she, speaking of.
So, do you want to make a motion for acceptance?
Yes, okay. I move that we accept Michael Schmeckley and Debbie Amika to our preservation board.
Second.
I have a motion by Lynn Deal, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. You'll let them know?
Yes. We don't have a meeting that's.
Next item is a presentation on a resolution authorizing the conveyance of real property at 528 State Street, the former Army Rec, Armory Recreation Center property, and approving a purchase and sales agreement. Mr. Glameyer.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. What you all have in your packet before you tonight is a resolution that would set forth a purchase and sale agreement and authorize the mayor to sign any documents associated with that. And this will be transfer of ownership of the old Armory Recreation Center building at 528 State Street. With the completion of the field house, staff reached out and, and asked folks if they had interest in the building to reach out to us. And we were pleased and excited to have the Elevating Life Church reach out. They had a great plan and do have a great plan in place to utilize that building. A bit of a collaboration with other community groups to operate out of there. Certainly fits all of the zoning criteria. We've had many meetings with those folks and been through the building, and they recognize some of the, the things that need to be maybe repaired or, or worked on, and they've accepted that responsibility. They're excited to begin operating out of there. A few things that they have, they want to operate their, some of their youth activities out of there. The gymnasium lends itself really nicely for that. They've got a, a, a business. It's, it's like a leadership training group that they work with, and they'd like to hold sessions there and do that. And then again, they've talked to some other community groups, such as Young Life and, and some other folks that may utilize that building as well. I think this is a great collaboration for the community. It gets somebody into that building and keeps it from, you know, becoming dilapidated or, or turning into an attractive nuisance where folks might try to break in and do damage or harm. I think Drake Hunter and his group, it's a great group, and, and they're excited and, and ready to take ownership of that. This is a complete transfer of ownership, so we would execute a deed. They would become the owners. They assume all liability, responsibility for the building, utilities, and they're, they're the new owners. And we'll continue to work with them. There are some things there that I think we may be able to help them through some of the new grant programs that are coming out to maybe help with replacing the roof and some of those things. Sandy and I have already talked to them about that, and so we'll, we'll continue to help them through that process. But I think this is a good group and excited to be able to transfer the property to them. This is for ten dollars and other considerations, so we'll spend that money wisely. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about this item.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Glameyer?
My only concern with coming up with this, and I think you answered it, was making sure that we did make it available as far as everybody being aware of it and everything, too. It sounds like that staff did do that, so I think it's a great thing if we can have something that'll help, again, offer other opportunities for the youth of the city and everything. And plus, we don't have to take care of the armory anymore since we don't have any purpose for it.
I also would like to remark, I went on the walk-in, walk-through, and Drake Hunter has invited me to be a part of their group. And it is on the national register, so there's an assessment grant. I've been in touch with the Historical Society, and they can do a brand-new assessment like what we, the city did to point out the things that they can help with. And so, there's, there's a source of grant funding there, too, to restore that. So, I'm thrilled about the building.
I think it's good that we're getting rid of the building. It's not going to be the city's responsibility. Probably will become a headache in the long run, but in our resolution here, it says the building's worth way over three hundred thousand dollars, and that we're selling it for ten dollars. I feel like they should be responsible for at least paying for the water tap in the sewer or something like that. That's just my opinion on it all.
I know we had discussion on the upgrade or the grant money that we got, the two hundred thousand, we'd have to pay back.
Yeah.
So, I know we have two thou, two hundred thousand dollars sitting out there that we're responsible for, right?
Yeah, the, the way the grant worked, there was a lot of money that came for improvements to the building. We'd be responsible to pay that money back should they, should we demolish the building or it be demolished otherwise by somebody else. So, that was a, that was a big consideration. You know, we did have other people interested in the lot, but they wanted to tear the building down. Well, that would have cost us, you know, significant dollars, and so we weren't interested in things of that nature. So, this is an opportunity for somebody to take the building as is, where is, and, and assume the additional responsibility and maintenance that's coming with that. There are some issues with the building, and I think you all are aware of that. The roof is one, HVAC is another. Infiltration of water, particularly into the basement, is another, things of that nature. So, they, they have agreed to assume that liability and expense.
Last time that I remember, we got an estimation of what it would cost to take care of those things and everything, between two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I remember at the regi, it wasn't cheap.
Right.
All I'm saying is that, we're given a building that they can do what they want with and pull out equity or whatever, then they can address those issues. Even if they buy it for twenty-five thousand dollars, I feel like there's equity if it's worth over three hundred thousand dollars per resolution. That's, that's all I'm saying.
And I would point out the, the covenants surviving closing, and that's the buyer cannot sell property for profit. In the event the buyer sells. property for profit. In the event the buyer sells the property within the next 25 years, any price for the property obtained above the purchase price must be provided to the city.
What I'm saying is you could pull out a line of credit against it.
Yeah, that's fair.
And then take care of the issue, not sell it. But that's just what one person's saying that.
They inherited a lot of deferred maintenance on that, that I feel that was our responsibility for years back. But that being said, they're taking on a big responsibility and a lot of those repairs are available for grants also. 25% match, they're nonprofit, so there's help there.
But even if they can get grants to fix all of these issues, then they don't have to worry about a line of credit and they're even getting that much more bang for their buck. But that's all I'm saying.
You're thinking there needs to be more equity put into it from.
I know, like even $25,000 is not a lot. 10 is, probably call back some, maybe some people and get a bidding war up to 20. But I'm just saying, that's just my two cents.
I guess the way I would look at it is if we put that up and went out to a bidding process, these guys have an established use that they're, and a plan that they've got for the building which benefits the community, the younger generation of our community. And if somebody comes out, you know, they're going to have to develop a plan for it. To go back a little bit, just so everybody's clear, we got a $200,000 grant to repair and do upgrades and work on, do things to that building. If it was to be tore down or walked away from, we are, we have to reimburse that $200,000 grant.
Yeah, I don't know the actual amount. I think it was actually closer to over $300,000. But yeah, you're correct in that if it was demolished either by us or by somebody else that purchased it, you know, right at the time they purchased it, then we would be on the hook for that, correct?
Do they get to keep the bats?
They do get to keep the bats.
Can Nina put that in?
If they like them.
I'll add that to the covenants.
They're going to fill up the hole where they're getting in.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments for Steve or comments that have been made? So, you would need a resolution for approval of this, is what you're asking for?
That's what we're asking for tonight, yes, is adoption of this resolution.
If there are no other questions, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement for the former Armory Rec Center at 528 State Street.
Second.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by Lynn Deal. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next is a presentation on a request to host a beer garden at public property on Beaver Avenue for the Break the Silence Suicide Awareness Event. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. If you recall, a couple of meetings ago, we approved fee waivers and kind of a special event plan for the Break the Silence event. At that time, they didn't have their beer garden application complete and turned into the city. And going forward, I'll try to, you know, have you approve those at the same time. That's what we did with Bobstock. All you really need to do is give the nod to having the beer garden on a public street just like Bobstock. It'll be on Beaver instead of Main Street. A touch to the memo is a diagram or a map showing where the beer garden will be located. It'll be on the block of East Beaver adjacent to City Park. There will be one way in, two ways out with security guards at each place. And all we need is for you to authorize that to happen on public property and then I'll process the rest of this special event permit administratively like we normally would.
Any questions or comments?
Now, with this, don't they have to dovetail off somebody else's liquor license or something like that?
No, they're a nonprofit.
Oh, okay.
On their own.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they had to before, but they've gotten their 501.
Okay.
Everybody in favor or not? I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to honor the request to host a beer garden on public property on Beaver Avenue for Break the Silence Suicide Awareness Event.
Second. I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdy Alice. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is council acting as liquor licensing authority on a presentation of possible action on a formal acceptance of an application for a new tavern liquor license, malt, venus, and spiritus liquors for the hall at 204 West Beaver Avenue, and request to schedule a public hearing on the application for September 7th. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. You may recall, this is the first step in the process of approving a brand-new liquor license. What we're asking for tonight is approval of a formal acceptance of the application. We received this application July 19th and worked with the applicants on getting all the paperwork completed. It's been reviewed by my office, the Police Department, and the City Attorney's Office and been deemed complete. Most of the fees are waived, still under the COVID measures by the Liquor Enforcement Division, but they have paid one fee for concurrent review. If the application is formally accepted by the council as the liquor licensing authority tonight, we'd schedule a public hearing for September 7th, post-notice on the property of the request for the liquor license and run an ad in the local newspaper at least 10 days in advance. At that hearing, the applicants, the purpose of that hearing primarily is to establish the support in the community for the application and for the issuance of the liquor license. So, your formal acceptance would start a 30-day clock before that public hearing could be held. And then during that 30 days, the applicants would be, the simplest way to show support is through petitions rather than getting dozens of people to come to a council meeting and say they support it. So, they would be gathering signatures on petitions in support of their application. The approval may be, the final approval may be contingent on a final inspection of the premises once they've done any remodeling or whatever. So, the Police Department has reviewed the application. The City Attorney has. They all find it complete, so staff recommends accepting the application for the new tavern liquor license for the hall and schedule a public hearing on the application for September 7th.
Now, am I correct in this is essentially replacing a current liquor license or one that was formerly, isn't this the former VFW?
VFW, yeah.
Which should have a liquor license there?
I think there was a gap. I think there was a period of time where there was no active license there, but yeah, it has been a liquor license premises before.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution for formal acceptance of the application for a new tavern liquor license at 204 West Beaver Avenue and request to schedule a public hearing for that application on September 7th.
Second. I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by John Caper. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation on first reading of an ordinance, 1254, amending Chapter 21, Article 4 of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code regarding electrical requirements and request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for August 17th. Mr. Kirkendall. I was informed across, Mr. Nationoff, you're not leaving until tomorrow.
The last time you asked, code changes. This is the code change. Do we get a copy of that?
Be careful what you ask.
Anyway, I have kind of made one amendment following what the state's done. Because one of the requirements for the NEC, National Electric Code, in the article, 210-8, is requiring two-pole GFIs for mini splits, outside air conditioning coils, dryers, and unfortunately, those are hard to come by and very pricey at this particular point in time for some reason. 2020 kind of messed that all up. So, but they have, they have done an amendment to lessen that for mini splits only. I took it one step further talking to the locals because the past year, the state's been enforcing the 2020 code and we have a year or two lag behind. I do that on purpose just so that all the bugs can be worked out of the new code before, and all the electricians are used to it, so I don't have to be the one that makes the decisions, a new code for them. So, we've amended it as the ordinance threads, basically following their guidelines. It gives us a year that we've put a hold on the GFIs for the dryers, outside AC coils, and the mini splits for one year with the chance to come back and revisit it if we start having trouble getting it. And then like the state, we added that, or until we adopt the 2023 code. So, if we find that we still can't get the product, we can lease less than that cost so that they don't have to spend a couple hundred bucks and get real creative on how you get the protection where they can't find the proper breakers. So, and it just makes it simpler when you go to sign up on a job. The other changes that are going to come that people need to be aware of is surge protections are now going to be required for all service changes and new services, so that'll be an additional cost that people have to get used to. And depending on the type of surge protection, that's another couple hundred bucks of material, of type of breaker or whatever they're using, so they have an, and I haven't heard that that's been a shortage of getting those. And then the other one, which is a safety precaution, is that, and I've talked to the light and power guys, Mr. Linton, and he's okay with it, so it'll help a, the city by the pedestals in the alley can start being marked as an emergency disconnect. So, when there is a need to have utilities shut off, that responding emergency departments will have a panel identifying that they can go there and shut it off and not have to wait for light and power to kill up the electricity. But any new services, that requires an upgrade of the electrical panel, will have to have now an outside disconnect. So, that's gonna, and then that'll be labeled. So, and it doesn't say you can't lock it, so somebody can't come shut your power off, but it has to be something outside because the big red trucks have a universal tool, bolt light, so we can get, they can get through the locks and stuff. So, but that's, like I said, that's another change. And then a big one for house remodels is that, and new basements and stuff, it'd be like the kitchen, is that all outlets in your basement, those that are not finished and those that are going to be built in the future, is that they will not have to be both GFI and arc bolt protected, which is the same as what's on the countertop. So, those dual-rated breakers are going to get even more harder to find, but we're, they seem to be coming across them with the outlets and the breakers, so that one there, I wasn't able to find a way to get out of that one. So, it's going to be a lot of new changes, so different things and more costs. And fortunately, I hope that the products can start getting to market before everybody has to start paying a lot more because, like everybody knows, all of the different construction materials and plumbing materials, electrical materials and all that stuff gone up because of the demand is higher than the supply right now. Other than that, that's kind of my initial introduction to the change, to the new code so that we can get in compliance with the year mandate that we have from the state to start enforcing the 2020 code.
So, you said everything in a basement or?
Outlets.
Is not going to have to be GFI and arc protected?
Yeah, all your outlets. Before they were just arc bolt required, now that has to be GFI.
When does that start?
As soon as this code becomes effective.
Can we table this?
And just so you know, I've stretched the envelope by 30 days, so we've actually going to be 13, 13 months past, one month past the year deadline in the state.
On the surge protection, was that new construction or also on remodel, upgrade?
Anything that you do to add new outlets in a basement.
On the surge protection?
The surge protection is any new or upgraded services.
So, a new panel, you'd have to do surge protection.
If you do an upgrade on your electric panel, electric service, then you'd have to put a surge protection at that time. And then if on the outside disconnect, the emergency disconnect, if you just replace the meter only and you don't touch the inside breaker box, you don't have to upgrade that, then you're okay. But if you have to upgrade the whole thing and you put it outside box, it has to have.
Outside disconnect.
That disconnect on it, so. And that is, I have already informed a few of the construction people, one's the Town Home Fourplex complex, that they know that after September, all those that they haven't got permits for will be an additional cost because they have four meters and you can't have, the old six-handle rule doesn't count anymore. You have to have one disconnect and not four that can all be in the same box. So, if it's the old Ycola downtown Betty Derrick's building, we're going back to that style where they have all the different meters and all the disconnects all in their gutter. So, that's, and now the, or if you have each, if you have your breaker box, it's a meter stack that's individually sectionalized also that none of the wires from each has their own little box that goes in because they can't be common spaces anymore in the same box. So, I'm suspecting that eventually the, once COVID gets done and people start doing manufacturing, they'll come out with those products so that they don't have to do the old style with the four-meter cans in the gutter and the disconnects and all that stuff. Anyway.
Aren't we done with COVID?
Well, I'd be here, the rumor is we are, but the manufacturers haven't caught up yet. We'll leave that political comment to itself. Other than that, any other questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Kirkendall? Fair or good news?
Now, you know I postpone these as long as I can.
Well, we appreciate that, but don't shoot the messenger. There's no questions. I would request we table this for another year. I would entertain a resolution.
Okay. I'd go ahead and offer a resolution accepting first reading of ordinance 1254, amending Chapter 21, Article 4 of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code regarding electrical requirements, and schedule a public hearing for the ordinance on August 17th.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Mike take the rest of the day off.
So, if you want to table it longer, you have to talk to legal advice on that one.
I'll say for the record that we've talked, it's been causing Mike a headache for about a year we've been talking about this, so he hasn't. for about a year, we've been talking about this, so he hasn't been.
Take the rest of the day off. Next is a presentation on the first reading of ordinance twelve fifty-five, to place a ballot question regarding a proposed charter change pertaining to the city procurement policy before the city voters in the November election, and request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for August seventeenth. Mr. Glamire or Ms. Williams?
Okay, well, I'll start, and then I'll leave Nina to all the hard questions, but we've talked about this at length, I think you guys are aware. We're trying to make a simple change to the charter that would remove, you know, what staff feels is kind of an onerous element, this locked in, if you will, some time ago, all contracts involving in the aggregate an expenditure of ten thousand dollars or more authorized by resolution before this board. So any expenditure that we make that's ten thousand dollars or more, we have to bring to you for approval, even though through the budget process you've approved it. And a lot of things, as you know, you see them all the time, simple items can be more than ten thousand dollars. So staff is all the time bidding things out and coming before this board for approval, again, when you've already seen it through the budget process. So we'd like to remove that sentence out of the charter, and then we would come before this board from time to time and actually change the limits that would require us to have your approval. That's, there's actually a section already in the code that sets forth those limits. And you all have the, would then have the ability to change those limits as you saw fit, and staff would bring those forth from time to time. So that's what this is about. This is to put that on the, on the ballot for November and ask the voters if we could eliminate that sentence. I'll let Nina share anything else, or happy to answer any questions I may be able to.
Yes, Steve did a very good job. It's, it's almost conflicting or confusing that this one sentence is in that part of your charter, when you have your procurement policy in the ordinance. And it makes more sense to have it all in one place in your ordinance that you could, in your codes, that you could amend by ordinance through the public process that you're elected. So it's really just a cleanup of, of the charter, and this is the language that we put into the, on the ballot for everyone to vote in the coordinate election in November.
Any questions?
I just wondered whether we find out exactly what the date was when this ten thousand dollars was established?
I, I have not been able to determine that as yet, but we're, we're digging into that. And then we'll, we'll kind of put an idea together what that looked like, but I don't think it was when the charter was first created, but I do think it was, it's been quite a while since, since that was added, you know, to the charter, so.
Any other questions? I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution, accepting first reading, reading of ordinance twelve fifty-five, to place a ballot question regarding the proposed charter change pertaining to the city procurement policy before city voters in the November election, and to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for August seventeenth.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by John Caper, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation, possible action on the first reading of ordinance twelve fifty-six, amending chapter ten, article four, the Fort Morgan Municipal Code Concerning Offenses of Minors and Underage Persons Raising the Minimum Age to Consume Tobacco to Twenty One Years, and request and schedule a public hearing of the ordinance on August seventeen. Ms. Williams?
Yes, our municipal court administrator brought this to my attention after he was speaking to some members of the police department. In two thousand nineteen, President Trump signed legislation to amend the federal age to sell tobacco from eighteen to twenty-one, and then the state of Colorado changed that from eighteen to twenty-one for the sale of tobacco products. So in, in order to clarify, resolve any inconsistencies between all of that, we want to change our, it's to clean up our code, to be consistent, to change that offense from eighteen years to twenty-one years of age for the offenses as it deals to tobacco use.
So is this an issue where we have to keep our ordinances at least as stringent as what the state requirements are? So we're changing it because the state has changed theirs?
Correct. If we're going to have an age, we should have the consistent age of the federal and the state. The federal and the state law do speak to, you know, the sale of tobacco, but if we're going to have something for the use in our code that we're going to give tickets for, we should be consistent with the federal and the state.
Does this include, like, vaping and all that kind of?
Yes, that's where this all came from, because of the concerns of vaping. It doesn't distinguish between different tobacco products, but it, it, it's more inclusive to make sure that includes vaping over the concerns of young people and how, I mean, this is why it happened, I'm not, it's not my personal opinion, but these, these, this legislation came about nationwide because of the problem with vaping.
But the age for a clerk to sell is eighteen, correct?
That changed in the, to twenty-one, I believe, for the, in the state, the state updated that to twenty-one for it to sell, so.
For a clerk to be, has to be twenty-one? Because they don't have to be for alcohol, so they're eighteen, so I believe it's eighteen.
I'm sorry?
I think he's asking for if the clerk, how old the clerk has to be to sell the tobacco? You have an eighteen-year-old clerk and they sell tobacco to a twenty-one-year-old, is that the question you're asking?
That is correct.
I think that recently changed as well in the state.
But I thought it went from sixteen to eighteen.
I'm pretty.
That would, that would seem reasonable to me, but I honestly don't know the answer to that.
I could pull up by the end of the meeting, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure, I'm ninety-five percent sure, that it changed from twenty-one with this new, in the Colorado House Bill, twenty, one oh one. And I, that goes to the, they, they are now asking for people to license, start to license tobacco sales as well. I will.
Because I think we have some education around the community that needs to be made, then, that it fall under Lauren's jurisdiction.
Yes, I, I see it says, further section twelve of the state statute applies to selling in, from a vending machine or failing to display the requisite warning, allowing a person under eighteen to sell or participate. So you're correct, it's eighteen to sell, unless it went from sixteen to eighteen, I remember it changed, so now it's eighteen to sell.
Which is, which is in line with alcohol as well in a restaurant.
Right, I, I am aware of some local businesses that weren't aware of that change by the state.
It is eighteen, it went from sixteen to eighteen.
Right, but it wasn't eighteen, that's what I'm saying, it was sixteen, I believe, at the time. And so we need to make sure we educate our stores, so we don't do, have the state coming in and doing enforcement and surprising our businesses.
Any other discussion?
I think, in, in reference to that, John, what I would, what I would suggest we do if this passes would be to, I could just draft a letter, we could send it to all the businesses that are selling tobacco, and educate them that way.
I'd appreciate it.
There's no other questions or discussion, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution, accepting first reading of ordinance twelve fifty-six, amending chapter ten, article four, the Fort Morgan Municipal Code Concerning Offenses of Minors and Underage Persons in Raising the Minimum Age to Consume Tobacco to Twenty One Years, and to schedule a public hearing for August seventeenth.
Second.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by John Caper, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
So with that, anytime the state would make a change to theirs, we're bound to change ours to comply with stricter limitations that they pass?
I was thinking of this, if you could clarify, if we're going to have an age as to, as something that the state and the federal law speaks to, yes, we, we would be able to pull that section from our code and then not enforce that, but then that wouldn't deal, then we wouldn't be able to enforce it against teenagers, you know, who are vaping in the schools.
So theoretically, it could be against the law by the state, if you're between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one, but by city ordinance, it wouldn't. So we'd still issue them a summons, but instead of issuing it into the city municipal court, we'd have to issue it into the state court. So it wouldn't change anything, except it would, it would make it more difficult for officers to determine, this is municipal court, anybody eighteen and under would go to municipal court, over the age of eighteen, but less than twenty-one couldn't be written into municipal court, would have to be written into county court, essentially.
And I'm told that practically, it's an issue with those, you know, the high school students at the, I guess the chief could speak for this, but it's, they're looking at the kid, the high school kids, smoking versus the twenty-year-olds, but I don't know.
Yeah, I was just curious about the laws having to be as stringent as, you know, you can pass more stringent, but we're compelled to be as stringent as what the state changes to?
It clarifies the inconsistencies and the confusion, and any, anybody who's a potential, you know, defendant, by saying that, you know, it's not clear as to who, what the ages are, since the federal and state age to sell tobacco is twenty-one.
So, so I don't believe you have to be that way. You, I mean, for example, state, the city could have domestic violence charges or DUI charges that the state has, we don't. We can choose not to be as stringent, but that law doesn't, as an officer, we're, we take note to uphold all of the laws, including state law. So all it does is changes where we would be able to cite that person.
I was just, after the fact, I was just, clarification question.
No, it's good, it's good for everyone here, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Next item is the twenty twenty-two budget calendar. Start our presentations, Mr. Glamire?
All right, well, it's hard to believe that we're about two-thirds of the way through the budget, and we're into the general fund.
No, it's not.
It's not. It's been a, it's been a fun, long budget process, but we're actually further along than we have been in years past, and we're excited about that. I think we'll be wrapping this up mid-September and potentially have a first reading of the entire document in October, which is, which is well early for us, so. So we bring forward tonight several general fund budgets, and we start with the mayor and council budget, and we just zeroed that, we just went straight zero. That's what you guys wanted, right? You'd do this for free.
Twenty-two's fine with me.
No, this is your budget, we tried to maintain things as, as they've been, we did add a few things, we, we added a uniform line item. This is to get you all a couple of shirts for when you're traveling to CML or other events, that way you can be distinguished as, as the Fort Morgan folks.
Now you start this.
Yeah, well, yeah, we can get you a couple honorary ones, how's that? And then we just increased dues and subscriptions just slightly, because it appears really historically we've been hovering around twelve thousand dollars, so we wanted to make sure we stayed within budget there. But everything else is pretty much the same on this budget, so happy to take some direction or answer any questions you have on this one.
Steve, I got one question. I could open it up for all of us here. Been thinking, and, you know, we just had Wayne and the group here, but we're the only ones in town that don't contribute to Bobstock, and I just wondered why that was.
Why not?
We're the only one that doesn't contribute to Bobstock.
Yeah, certainly not with cash, right? We certainly have a big presence with our in-kind, for sure, but, yeah, and, and actually, I had a conversation with Lindsay one of the evenings at Bobstock, and, you know, we chatted a little bit about that. They weren't asking, but it was certainly an interesting conversation about, should the city, you know, contribute cash toward the project. We certainly, as you heard from, from Wayne and the team there, that we certainly see a direct and indirect benefit from that event, and it really does act and feel a lot like a city event, where we're deeply involved in it from the beginning, clear to the end. And it does bring a lot of people into town, and while I, Doug and I chatted briefly about this, and I tried to just kind of dig, and it's hard to put, you know, your fingers on that tangible amount, what is that, sales tax and, and, you know, benefit physically from the folks that come into town. I don't know what that number is, but there's no doubt, it's, it's a significant amount, right? And, and they talked about it, the businesses that see an increase in business and the vendors that, that do submit some sales taxes and things of that nature that we wouldn't normally realize. I do think there's a, there's a tangible cash benefit to, to the city and to the citizens that way. We're glad to be a partner, you know, with our in-kind, but I, I do think there's, there's some value to considering that, a cash contribution to that event going forward. We could certainly add that in, you know, we have a contribution line item, it's specifically specified right now for County Express, but we could change that line item to contributions and then designate certain amount toward Bobstock if, if this body wanted to do that.
I know that they definitely have an impact on the sales tax generated. Gosh, if you were uptown till ten or eleven either night, this place is, is rocking. And I know the sales tax increase comes around. They've done it for thirteen years, fourteen coming up, and, I mean, it's been a phenomenal draw to our community. So, you know, I, I guess I would agree with, with Doug on that. Probably something, probably wouldn't have heard it, heard to do it a few years ago, you know, we, we typically do with support various events that happen with tables and such as that, but this is one that really comes and generates, it's not a nonprofit, it's one that they put together and is for the community. And I think that if you can put five hundred dollars in uniforms, you can move that decimal point a couple places and help with that.
Ron, do you remember, I remember when I was on council before, we contributed a lot to, Kerry Hart had a big project with, with promoting the city with the Glenn Miller stuff, and then we used to have, we used to have money set aside that, that different groups would come and ask for.
Yeah, but that got to be, we got every penny, nickel, and dime.
Yeah, that, that was, that was hard to manage.
That was the reason that got cut back and curtailed, and it went to just
Yeah.
Doing the, the tables, the in-kind services and, and that, because we were getting hit with a lot of things that really didn't generate or, or bring any revenue back to the city. And I think this is a unique creature that really does a lot for our community and, and the city. I know I have relatives that plan every year on it now, so.
That's what I, I was, I just remembered that, but I did remember that one was separate, and it was, I think we gave something for three, did a three-year commitment, and that was separate from that other bunch that was very hard to pick out. It was, Kerry Hart put together that, that video, that's just what I remember, but I know we've done certain things in the past.
Well, that was for development.
That it was economic development.
For them to, yeah, it was donate or contribution to economic development, our economic development side to be part of, of the development for the Glenn Miller.
This kind of fits that, though, it really helps us economically, but.
So.
Something we could think about.
Sorry.
I'm done.
John?
I'm going to play devil's advocate and say, well, and I think you touched on it, Ron, was the car show, brings a lot of people from out of town into town over the weekend, and I, I think the donation in kind by efforts by our departments, I don't, maybe we put a pin to that and figure out what the dollar amount was for the in-kind electric apartment.
Oh, yeah, I think we could, we could do that easily, I think it's actually in the event application.
Entertain, entertain that again.
Yeah.
But I'm afraid to start giving money to one because I think that we're gonna be going down the same road we were before of giving money to other organizations that are bringing people to town and fall under some of that same, maybe not to the same numbers involved, but it's a slippery slope, I don't want to, think I want to start going down.
And something I didn't realize when Wayne was talking and everything too, I mean, at the, for the in-kind, they take in the extra police, uh, hours and everything that are put in, but I'm sure it doesn't put, take into extra hours that the parks department and the, uh, street department and the electric department and everybody like that were putting in to help with it too. I'm kind of like John, I do think that, uh, as, I mean, like I said, as far as Doug said, I, I think that it's a great thing, and it's, I can't believe what it's become and what, uh, benefit just for showing off Fort Morgan, not talking about the economic impact that it really has, but I'm afraid that it would probably start a precedent that we may look back on and go, that was not a bright move, especially where we do contribute so much in kind.
Is that something you could provide for us so we could re-entertain it?
Yeah, absolutely. We could put together a cost counting of what we think that in-kind looks like. I think a lot of that's already been done, but yeah, we could certainly come up with some numbers and bring that back.
Look at and entertain and make a decision once we see.
I do want to look at it again, I'm not, I just, I want to have numbers in front of me.
Yeah, and I think what I'll try to do, um, by the next meeting, if I can, is actually do that for the major events we have. Car show, Bobstock, and some, some of these others, um, they all work with the staff and see if we can come up with some, some dollar amounts that we would contribute toward those things. Uh, it just helps with that program. This is the, uh, um, the bus that takes people to various appointments and things. I'm, I'm not real familiar with, uh, with, with the program, but I think you can call for the service and they'll take you to appointments, doctor's appointments and various things of this nature, it's, it's.
I know what it is, I was just curious why it was under our budget. It's our participation in the.
Yeah, it, it really just sort of one of those generic, um, contributions, and so when we do contributions for various groups, typically that comes into a city council budget as opposed to another budget.
It helps pay for elderly transport and running around town, taking them to Greeley or, or that.
Some of us might need a ride to the council meeting as elderly.
All right, any other direction on that, uh, budget? Okay, perfect. Well, then we'll move to, uh, the city manager budget. I think you'll see in here most things are equal or similar to what we've had. Advertising's a little higher, we seem to hover around three thousand, there was an odd year in twenty nineteen, but for the most part, I think that three thousand covers those expenses. We did, uh, lower the meeting expense, um, from seventy-five hundred to five thousand, I think historically. That's, that's been a good number for that. And other than that, I don't see a lot of changes or differences there. Employee recognition, um, this is, uh, some of the events that we do for employees and also the turkeys and hams, uh, and we do have, that we do at Christmas, so we give them a gift certificate and they can go down to, uh, Edwards Market and redeem that for a, a turkey or a ham for the Christmas holiday. So, and we do have a few more employees, so we wanted to make sure that we were able to cover those expenses, um, for twenty-twenty-one, or twenty-twenty-two, rather.
Is that more popular than the dinners?
Oh, it's, well, we do both, right? We also provide a, a, uh, Christmas, uh, dinner and event as well, but yes, that is, the turkeys and hams is a widely popular, um, thing that we do for the employees. They love being able to get that, uh, every year at Edwards, so, and it's a nice partnership with our friends at Edwards, so. Any other questions on the city manager budget? Okay, here are none. I'll turn the next, the podium over to, uh, Ms. Bostren, and she can talk about the finance department budget.
Good evening, it's great to see you all again, and it's great to be here again for this most wonderful time of the year budget. I'm here this evening to present to you the budget for the finance, a also known as the fund department. Ours is pretty much straight, straightforward. Uh, the biggest change in our department is the allocation for our rent. Uh, the building, of course, that we reside in is owned by the electric fund, so those of us who sit outside of that fund do have to pay rent for the office space that we have, and so that ten thousand dollars is then going to be, gifted to the, yeah, electric department. Pardon me?
Have to pay his rent salary.
Okay.
I'm glad to know that's all he's making.
He owns more real estate than that.
So other than that, um, pretty much straightforward. I do want to say that, um, working with city manager, uh, Steve Glamire, that this has been a really great experience for me, getting to work on the budget. He has been very thorough, and I will say that I really appreciate that he really wants to take a good, hard look at, um, the budget and actually the cost for the citizens of this community, so I just wanted to give you kudos for that, so.
Yeah, thanks, Chris, and, and I'll tell you, it's, that feeling is, is deeply mutual. I, I asked last year for several things and was unable to get those, and I asked Chris, can we do things like a twenty-twenty actual and a year-to-date, uh, things like that, and she was able to do that immediately, so. And then splitting some things out, you'll see that we've kind of split out this admin support so that you can actually see, what's the budget look like year over year, and is it increasing or decreasing? And so I really appreciate the effort. Uh, I dumped a lot on her and she, she's really tackled that, and all of the staff over there, and they're, they're doing a great job with this, so.
Yeah.
That feeling is, is definitely mutual, so.
And of course, it's been a pleasure, you know, that we've got a great team with the department managers and the directors and staff. Everybody, everybody's really receptive, um, in getting everything together for the budget, so, just so you know that it's, it's been a great experience for me, it is a lot of work, but there again, we have a great team, and so we just want to give kudos to everyone, so. Other than that, do you have any questions in regards to the fund department's budget? Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris. All right, next we have the city clerk budget, so, uh, Mr. Brendan.
Thanks, Steve. My budget's pretty simple, um, we don't do a lot of capital projects in the city clerk's office or do, buy a lot of equipment. So it's pretty much the same year to year. We did lower legal notices and publications by about a third, um, just to kind of match with historical averages. We, um, or get closer to them. We always just want to be sure that we have enough to cover those, because if we start passing a lot of ordinances or, uh, things like that, that money can add up. Um, we lowered the phone, uh, cost from six hundred to three hundred, um, again, because of historical. And then we raised, uh, conferences and conventions and dues and subscriptions, both. That's mainly because Jill Curtis is, uh, she was promoted to the deputy clerk, um, a couple of years ago. She's now in the third year of, um, the certification program to become a certified municipal clerk. Hopefully she'll finish that next year, it's kind of gotten gummed up by COVID. Had to do it all remote last year, and they're still doing it remote this year, so I don't know if it, she'll make it through as quickly, but, um, that's why those were raised up. Other than that, we always, um, I have twenty thousand dollars for an election in there. It's not an election year, but we always budget for one in case the council might have some initiative they want to undertake, and we've got the money in the budget to do that. Any questions?
Pretty much the same.
All right, well, then we'll move to the city attorney budget, another one we just zeroed out. I talked to Jeff and Ina, and they said they loved working here and would do a pro bono. I think that's okay, right? This one is a simple budget, it's just engineering and consulting, that's the line item we use to pay our contract attorneys. Uh, no changes from this year to next at two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. I think we'll be under that, we've done a really good job of working with them, and, and we don't, uh, realize that full amount, I don't believe, and I don't think we will this year, so, uh, great working with those guys and, and glad we could, uh, have them continue with us, so. Any questions on this one? Pretty simple.
So you're saying that we're not going to continue the zeros all the way down?
Yeah, well, we could, it's before you for consideration. Yeah. All right, the next one is the airport. We'll invite Brent up, talk about that one.
Good evening, everyone. Airport's pretty straightforward. Uh, we did, um, increase the department operations, uh, we renewed the FBO contract up there and had an increase in that contract price, and so what you see there is just a reflection of what that contract will be next year. Uh, we lowered utilities to kind of match where utilities have been trending out there, and then also did a little bit of reduction in the training and education, and other than that, everything else is pretty straightforward. We don't have any employees or anything on this one, so pretty short budget.
Did I see something about a add-on to the building? Did I misread something? Are they adding on to the main office?
We've done some upgrades out at the main office, um, but, um, you're probably, you, I can't remember if we put anything in the capital budget for next year for the airport. There's, there's two places that we get funding for projects up at the airport. There's this, this is just the operations budget, and then there, if they have projects that are going on, like the runway resealing that we're doing this year, those dollar amounts are found in the capital budget that we've already gone through. And so there might have been a airport issue on the capital budget.
I don't believe there is, I can't remember anything specific to remodel. I mean, we spent a couple of years remodeling the offices up there, but I don't believe there's an expansion of that building.
We're having, we're having discussions with the, um, with a business up there that needs to do some work and potentially add a, a hangar up at the facility, um, but that's not a city hangar, that would be a privately owned hangar, but they have to work through us and our master plan and all that stuff to make sure that that works, and that's part of the, the discussion we'll be having with the advisory board next week.
That made, okay. I'll look through the minutes again, see if I misread that. Thanks.
I know at the last airport advisory board meeting, we had discussed the long-term plan that R S and H had put together and the engineering that would, to review moving things to the east side of the runways there. Was that something we're gonna look at maybe putting for engineering on there to utilize R S and H to move that, get that ball rolling forward?
Well, we have, we have money in that budget, we, we still have a lot to work through, I mean, that's, um, there's a lot of moving parts there with the, with the company that needs the hangar, and so we've, we've plugged money into next year's budget for engineering and consulting, and we'll see if that gets us to where we need to get, and so, so we have, we have some money earmarked towards that, and that can go towards that specific project or anything else that we want to do out of the airport.
Any other questions for Brett on this one?
All right, thanks, Brent, appreciate it. Uh, next we have the human resources budget, so we'll invite Jennifer up to talk about this one.
Good evening. Kind of the same thing, pretty straightforward. We did make a couple changes, um, decreasing the budget on a couple line items for the employment expenses, the employee recognition, as well as the data processing, just kind of looking back, and, um, now Chris said that we've kind of really dove into the budgets and kind of looked to see what's been put into each one of these accounts, and we felt like we could go ahead and reduce those. Another one that kind of went up and, um, was our rent, um, how Chris had mentioned, um, it was a certain portion divided between finance and then HR for that. We also decreased the wellness, um, down to twenty, and then also, if you look at the risk management compliance, we did increase that. If you can kind of look in the previous years, you can see it was running along there last, for this year, we budgeted nine thousand, and we're currently running at six thousand, six ninety, so we felt like we should increase that. Our SOMBA, which is our MBRs, go into that, as well as our random DOT drug screenings, and then also our AED, AED units at each of our locations. Does anybody have any questions?
ADA compliance upgrades, are those the ones that the EPA came in and went through the entire town audit process?
Yep, when we got audited, I forget the year, um, well before I came, but yeah, so that's where we would have spent some of that money to try to bring things up to, uh, compliance. We continue to deal with those, particularly on the street side, right? Yep, streets, we end up, anytime we touch a road with anything other than a surface treatment, we have to upgrade at least the intersection handicap ramps, and so we spend a lot of money doing that. Most of the buildings and, and, uh, other things have been taken care of, but we do, that's where that money would have come out of. So that's why you don't see any money in there, because we really feel like we've tackled all the buildings and things that were on that list, so.
So we're pretty well caught up with that, other than our streets and.
Yeah.
I knew that was hanging out there.
Streets will be ongoing.
That was way before you took that position, so, okay.
What, what is tuition assistance?
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
So the tuition reimbursement is, uh, what we offer for any employees that would, um, further their education towards their, you know, within their field, um, we offer tuition reimbursement, uh, fifteen hundred dollars per year.
Yeah, it's a nice, uh, program that we have to help, uh, employees better themselves, and, and it also helps the, the organization and the community when they, uh, you know, upgrade their skills, we, we get the benefit of that as well, so. Just a nice little benefit that we offer. We've got a few, uh, employees going through various classes, one in finance in particular, um, you know, working toward a bachelor's degree in, in accounting, I think, and so, uh, it, again, we get some benefit from, from that, and, and they do as well.
So that's different than training, employee training?
Yeah, employee training is maybe sending somebody to a conference or a class that's, uh, specific to maybe Cassell or, you know, uh, some, some industry trade that we're in, uh, way different than, than the tuition assistance. That's where they actually sign up for college education and, and may get something out of that, or a trade school education.
Any other question?
Any other questions for Jennifer?
All right, thanks, Jen. Uh, next is general government. This is where we pay a lot of just the general services for the city, a lot of the office supplies and expenses, uh, utilities for this building in particular. We do have a couple of loaner vehicles, so that's why you see a new line item for maintenance of equipment and vehicle, the two, uh, cars that are parked out back, um, and then, uh, janitorial for this building, so all of those things come out of this account, and then the, uh, admin and support, this is where the other, uh, enterprise funds would pay services, um, for me and you and others, right? So we spend time working on those accounts from time to time, so they basically pay us for that, so. That's, that's what's in this account, it's pretty general. Questions on this one? All right, and the last general fund tonight is perpetual care. This is a cemetery, um, the piece of the cemetery that's, uh, out there, um, mostly revenue side and, and then just that, uh, expense, the transfer, and so Chris can talk to this one.
Hello again. Uh, the perpetual care fund, of course, we're required to maintain our, this particular fund because we. this particular fund, because we do have a city-owned cemetery. And so a portion of the sale of lots is allocated to perpetual care. So as you will see, that's 40%. This does end up being a surplus budget. It usually does every year. So really, the only monies that can be expended out of this fund is the interest income. Then that does get transferred to the general fund to help with any expenses there. So, just to explain the transfer between banks, what happens lots of times is when a lot is purchased, it is purchased with either a check or a credit card. And so the total revenue for that purchase of that lot goes into our main operating account. And since we do have to take that perpetual care out, and it cannot commingle with the other funds, we have to transfer that to the other bank. So that's why you have that expense and revenue. It's kind of just an offset, but just so you understand why that expenditure line is there. Okay? Any other questions? Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris. That's all of the general fund for tonight. We'll have a couple of more general fund budgets, or several more general fund budgets, two more meetings where we'll tackle the rest of the general fund, and then the budget will be substantially complete. So, excited to be that close. And that's for me, that's it for me on that one.
Well, I know that I'm going to touch on what Chris brought up. This is the first part of the budget. We've spent all these months developing and in coming up with it, having all of the administrative costs in there, the salaries, and looking at what you put together from where we've done past. It really shows that there's been a lot of effort put in by staff and you to put together a really sound budget. I know this is the first part of it, so I'll take it back if the 11 next ones don't come up.
That's fair.
I would just like to say, from my point, I really appreciate the information that you give us regarding the reserve fund, where we're at, the long-term planning that you guys have gone in to put together a five-year capital plan, look at where we're at five years down the road for the reserve funds with the expenditures that come up, and keeping council and the public in general informed as to what's going on. So the openness and transparency is something that, for me personally, I greatly appreciate. And I commend staff, you, everybody in your group that have come together and put these together. It looks like it's done pretty well. You know, we've spent a lot of time visiting all the departments and seeing what your needs are, and this just gives me a warm, fuzzy feeling.
Well-
And in all honesty, I just want to say, I personally appreciate the time and effort that has come into this. And it shows in this first go-around with the general fund.
Yeah, thank you, Ron. I think Chris and I are kind of Excel geeks, and we love to be in it, and we love to analyze these things. And so it's been a lot of fun, and it's been a good experience, I think, for all of us to dive a little deeper. And so I appreciate those comments, and we'll continue to tweak and make sure that you're getting what you're looking for, and the public can understand it. That's what's important to me, is that they understand what we're trying to do here. It's $80 million. This is a big business we run. And I want to make sure that if there are questions or concerns or comments, that we hear those, and we do everything we can to make sure they understand it. So, thank you.
I speak for myself, and I think council also appreciates it. Bids, reports by officials and staff.
I think just a few things for me. We continue to see renewed and continued interest in the CenterPoint properties. I think you'll see more things to come very soon. Excited about a few of the prospects that are on the horizon, so stay tuned. You'll see one tonight in an executive session, and we have lots of other good things to come. So, that development and the effort that we've put forth is really starting to pay back, and we're excited about that, so. Just mention, and I know Lauren's going to mention this too, so I won't steal his thunder, but next Tuesday will be the last of the fireside chats with myself and the mayor and the police chief. So if you're out there and you have questions for us that you would like to hear about, info@cityoffortmorgan.com. You can email us, and we'll answer those questions next Tuesday evening. And then right after that will be our last movie in the park, and it's The Goonies. So if you want to come out and watch The Goonies next Tuesday. We'll take, we'll do the fireside chat around 8:00, and then the movie starts at dusk. And I know there's a huge event right ahead of that, but I'll let Lauren talk about that. But, and then again, just glad to be working on the budget and getting that wrapped up. So, happy to answer any questions or any rumors or anything out there that you need me to try to address. Happy to do that, but otherwise, that's it for me.
Well, I will, I will talk about our event on Tuesday as well. Tuesday, we're going to have our first annual barbecue with the Blue. This year, unlike in the past years where we did national light out, we went out to the community and asked for support. And we garnered so much support, it was far more than we ever expected. So we're going to have a really large event from 4:00 to 8:00. We're going to have things like free food, so that's pretty big. But then we're going to have a zip line on Main Street, mechanical bull, bouncy houses. We're going to have all of our cars on display, or at least some of the police cars, different equipment on display, lots of games for kids, lots of fun stuff. And then at 8:00, like Steve said, we'll go directly to the fireside chat and then the movie, Goonies. So it'd be a long night, good fun night for everybody in the family. Hope everybody shows up. Secondly, as most of you know, Jared Crone has announced his retirement, and his last day is Friday. So Jared doesn't like any public gatherings. As I met with Megan, and he has no interest in meeting with anybody to talk to anybody about anything. So I've been kind of going around making the rounds, talking about Jared on the newspaper, the radio. And I want to try to embarrass him every chance I can, since I can't do it once publicly. So Jared's been with our department for about 30 years now. Last 14 years, he's been as a command physician. So he leaves on Friday. It's going to be a huge void for our department. We're going to definitely miss him, but we have already moved forward a little bit. We've got some preparation. We did the testing earlier this year for commander and sergeant, so we just announced that Sergeant Kevin Miller will become commander, and Wayne Campbell, who's currently a corporal, will be the next sergeant. So that will take effect right away next month. We're already able to move forward based on that testing that we did earlier this year. So hopefully, you know, it'll be a big void, but Kevin Miller comes with 30 years of law enforcement experience as well, 27 of them here in Fort Morgan. And Wayne Campbell has several years between Fort Morgan and his previous employers up in the mountains where he worked before. So we'll definitely miss Jared, but we're going to be ready to move on as well. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of that? If not, thank you.
Anybody else? Council? Bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brandon?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city is now accepting sealed bids for the purchase of LED light fixtures until 3:00 PM on August 4th, for the replacement and installation of a security camera system at the police department until 3:00 PM on August 10th. The historic city hall maintenance and repairs project until 3:00 PM on August 12th. And bids for stormwater detention pond maintenance services until 3:00 PM on August 20th. Under meetings, the airport advisory board is scheduled to meet on August 11th at noon at the airport. And the next city council regular meeting will be on August 17th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. I did have a few announcements. Steve took one, Lauren took the other, so I've only got one left. Quail Dunes Golf Course is going to be closed next Monday for aerification of the turf. So it will be reopening for play, hopefully by Tuesday morning, the front nine. But it'll be closed all day. The driving range will be open, but the course will be closed on Monday, August 9th.
That's all I got. Next item on our agenda is an executive session, for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-4024E, and for the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Incentives and development agreements. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second. I thought we were going home early. I have a motion by Kevin Lindell, a second by John Caper. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries, and we will adjourn to executive session.